Okay, discussion action regarding ongoing ordinance violations. I'm going to mind the discovery of rules. Next, the clean water. I would entertain a motion on that. You move forward, yes? The motion for one prepared in your package.
I move that this select board authorize the town attorney and the code enforcement officer to file land use citation and complaint in Maine district court to address ongoing ordinance violations at four ninety six.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all voted in favor. That's two posts. Okay, moving forward, but we will approve the minutes of June twenty.
Will we approve?
There is a motion in the second to approve any further discussion. Seeing none, all votes in favor. That's. Let me just move on, we'll start with you, Lindsay.
Um, I. Other than that, the ball feels a break. I know that you've been doing it with that one, but like the fields for all stuff, everything you look pretty fantastic.
Actually, don't. Well, awesome.
And I want Kido and Marjorie currently at Tweetcamp for the mornings. I don't know if it's appropriate for us to send her tomorrow. So, I'm really proud of you. I'm happy to bring that in our next meeting. It's on the hop or something, or write it down, whatever you have.
Well, and myself, same thing, the baseball tournament down there, there is a mess of volunteers, so Olivia, John Lynch, I mean, too many to name. Just really incredible, the town guys really have assisted and come in clutch, trash, a bunch of others, so. Nickerson with the extra mo wasn't really getting the view as prep for us, really just getting all fantastic, and I think both were up on Thursday or Friday.
No, it's not all Friday.
Right, just weathered ones, but then that's really all I have, so we'll roll right into the town manager's report. Now, all of the county, you know, from having to turn it over to DocGup, we're still waiting on the website, but that started moving yesterday, and so we hope to have that up next week or two, so everything's aligned with that new secure. Whatever you suffered, I guess, we were approached by Career Center to host a career center consultant at the town office. I'm not going to say no to anything like that, really, they're looking for one to four in the afternoons on the first Wednesday each month, they'll take Watkins, they'll pack things by appointment. The goal for them being here is to serve our community and the surrounding towns to give people a place to end their back to work. So that should be a positive thing, and you know, no cost, but an added service.
Are they kind of couple size that?
Yes, they're getting there, all of that, they're going to get your copies.
Can we question?
I can, I can send it, yeah. We received the thirty two thousand dollars in ARPA money through FAA already for the airport, so those were related to expenses back in twenty twenty one. The planning board heard the initial site plan review from Waste Management's affiliate, main regional conversion facility, which we'll give more about in the next item. Proposing the construction installation of bio solids processing facility on the Waste Management property at the site of the former tire processing facility. So what in there, what is our note there is that they've scheduled a public hearing for Thursday the twenty seventh at six o'clock. And that will be followed by a special meeting so that they can begin their review of the renewed criteria for the site claim to do workings. And then their next meeting, regular meeting, is not the second, it'll be the third Thursday of August the seventeenth. And right out of the way that things are moving, that would be the night that they're going to be able to finalize their review, find his effect for that applicant. But that's all going to be dependent on whether it cares for twenty seven, so exciting stuff happening there. The Graves facade grant was closed out last week or the week before, the remaining balance of approximately twenty dollars being cut back to the town. The last thing there was the railing installation. Tithing meeting for next week is canceled, we'll look at August twenty second, I'm fairly confident we'll have something for them to consider there. And then at the end of the month, on the twenty seventh, Thursday at three o'clock, is a ribbon cutting at three D up at two eighty water. They joined the Chamber of Commerce and they want to introduce folks to their facility there. They are also recipients of funding for that project, so another small business moving, we like it. We received our share of real estate taxes collected from first part, which amounted to thirteen three thirty seven, which nets us a whopping four hundred and sixty one dollars. This is the first year of anything net, I don't know, we're going to continue to keep an eye on that, I don't know how long that will sustain before they come more debt and then it goes the other way again. Unpaid twenty twenty two taxes, you've received courtesy notices, you've now received your formal thirty day notice. If they're not paid by August first, the morning of August first, they will go lean, that's costly for taxpayers. And the tax assessment's tentative, we're planning to meet Thursday the tenth to commit taxes, which means the week after tax bill from going helping taxes will be due September the nineteenth. Several applications for the librarian position. We're continuing to accept those, I'll start interviews tomorrow, and then Friday, they have a meet greet with Alsa, local artist, Saturday at ten thirty. Trustees don't have a July meeting, they'll need to get in August. It's been a while since we've met, so we haven't talked about vote rate, that was canceled. Purplefield called, noticed the dam, instead of calling, said it's not safe, they're missing a lot of their safety barriers up there, and the flows just wasn't what it was. So we agreed to cancel, we'll look at that again next year, it was really disappointing, that did not happen. We still have days planning, it's underway, Parks Committee will meet on Monday at four to continue with that, we're building out that portion of website right now, hopefully get some good stuff going on there. A lot of great sponsors, still sponsor opportunities, and it should be a good event all around. The music park series, that is finalized, that's sponsored by Franklin Sables Bank, that's going to be the five Wednesdays in August, they're going to have different group each night play at the gazebo of the park. Unless it's pouring rain or thunder and lightning, it will move on. As a part of that, we have hired local musician and the organizer, Chris Paulson. He's paying here a buck for all these bands, we just make sure that they pay, she'll emcee at the event and run it through the night, which will be great, she'll burn it, set up for them, the sound or whatnot, so that can be very fun. We're working on scheduling a food truck to be there for each evening, not knowing who we're going to have, I'm just going to offer, you know, one food truck there for the night and hope that that goes well. So that will run six to seven thirty on Wednesdays in August, sorry, board members, you'll miss two of them. But that's kind of what it was, sometimes the availability, believe for scheduling, so thanks to Franklin Sables Bank for making that happen. The federal government did declare a state of emergency related to the Mayfair rainstorm, that was what we walked the dock on the river, river road damaged, Sandy River Road damaged. That will be reimbursed to us in large part by FEMA funds for our local expenses, so I've had, I've got that all documented and just been kind of rolling that up when the form comes to declare our losses and then see reimbursement there. Next week, we're meeting with DOT to discuss the traffic light upgrade here at the intersection of groups two, two oh one A. That is a project that if it stays on track, will get done this year, it was planned for three years ago, that's next year, now we're hoping to get it in this fall. Waste Management's hosting our household hazardous waste collection event on the twenty ninth. When we, please remember that if you are going to participate, yes, it's free, but you need to use the group two facility entrance for your HHW and not the airport for that kind of stuff. A thank you to everybody that helped out with the twelve year state tournament, I thought it was going to be wrapped up by now, it is not, because of Sunday, it stretched out, so we've got a game down there tonight, we've got a game down there tomorrow, possibly one on Friday. It's been a great opportunity to show our fields, and other people who we've heard talk about, the condition of our fields was over the top. The volunteers and our contractors and our staff, it really came together, they did run follow with one public works person to make sure they were up and clean. I think I hear the value there, and then obviously, you know, it's that non-tangible asset, but the the economic development end of that, and I love the businesses thrive. I was here last week after a lot of games, it's eight fifteen at nine, and the agents have to work in the place with mar. I think that was downtown and dinner, and the place was mar, so we're seeing a lot of that ice cream shops, C stores, it's just great, and the local lodging in the broader area. That was a big win for us, I think, and getting people to think more about our area terms towards the ATV liking that too. And then, so our three manholes were lifted primarily because of the Route Two, you know, the pain project, it's relatively costly, but it was required before they handled that, and then did one private. At the end of somebody's drive, it was so good, man. So that finished that project. Start with the light, it's done. All right, thank you. Let's see, discussion action on July twenty, general warrant.
Oh, that we approved general warrant number thirteen, the amount of three hundred and thirty six thousand, two hundred and sixty five dollars and forty six cents.
Any further discussion on that?
Thank you, Walmart community just Walmart.
Yeah, totally.
And then what's Saint Germain?
Saint Germain is the engineering firm that's been handling the design and bidding of the bomb, is the Rock, called it, not Windy Hill, we have a grant to support that. They put that up to bid last month, I didn't bring it to you, the bid was seven hundred thousand dollars to replace that crossing. And so what we're going to do is this wrapped up their bidding services, and we're going to repay it again probably in November or December, the twenty twenty four construction date.
Good question, Innovative Land Services, the forty five hundred, has that been, that's the roadside mowing, right?
Yes.
Has that fully been completed already?
The first round.
First round, and what all the specs meant, did we?
It was meant as presented by the act, it was not meant to do specifics of the RFP, it was meant to what they had submitted. Which was, you know, the width off the edge of the road, it was not what we could ask for, it was what they had offered, I think that was a five or five and a half width off the road when we targeted eight or ten.
I don't remember that, I thought it was like ten like the whole way around, I didn't realize that they specifically said in that that they were leaning to five feet?
Every, every applicant that submitted a proposal described the width off the edge of the road.
Okay.
So if we state, pardon, would we state ten?
We were looking for ten, the original, yes, yeah.
That's what we asked that, yeah.
I definitely don't remember, so that's something that can be dropped, we definitely have to look at a little bit more like.
I'm not sure if that was included in this invoice, they, it's a part of it, but that's a plus, it's a, I think it's contract price, I'm not positive. I'd have to look back, it's whether they think they're going to do by the hour or by the.
The devil is in the details, right? We only have to look at that stuff closely.
Yeah, because I mean, I definitely.
Like to not relitigate each process. Very good question.
Yeah.
Then you want to take that up against the community.
Sure.
Right, anything else on our schedule? Say nothing, all those in favor? And that's everyone. Okay, discussion action on July nineteenth, airport.
I move that we approve a warrant amount of eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty five dollars and sixty four cents.
Second. What we've discussed.
Although the same people, honestly, I mean, two forty six actually seems like with the heat pumps that have been installed now, but actually. Or was what I anticipated, maybe. And then.
Okay, discussion action on July nineteenth, sewer.
Hopefully, we approve the sewer cannon in the amount of twenty five thousand, six hundred and forty seven dollars and eighty cents.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all votes in favor. That's everyone. All right, so we'll move right into the presentation by Waste Management. So what more is yours?
Thank you. We come up, please. So. We attended our first planning board meetings and presented to them our project and thought it would be a good idea to come, take up a little of your time and show you folks as well what we're planning to do rather than hear it from somebody else. I'm definitely going to have met Ron yet, nice to meet you, but Sherwood McKenna is our district engineer, Derek's my operations manager on site, and with me today, we have Jamie Ecker from New England.
Wow, that's from Brunswick, happened.
From Brunswick, but Jamie has been with Waste Management for a variety of years, certainly as a corporate organics specialist, and Lindsey Dana, also with our corporate organic folks. Jamie lives here in Maine, and Lindsey's from New Hampshire, and both of, they can give you their backgrounds, but both have been involved in bio solids management for many, many years, and are here to they'll be overseeing the startup of our project, and then once it's completed and up and running, the local team will likely manage it. Go ahead, Jamie.
All right, thank you. We have a brief presentation, it's the same presentation we gave the planning board last week. And again, I'm Jamie Ecker, I'm the company's director of organics project development. And for me personally, this is a very exciting project, I work all over the US and Canada for WM. But I live here in Maine, so it's great to have a project right on our home turf. And Lindsey Dana is our corporate director of Bio Solids Business Development, so we'll be presenting the project tonight. So what we want to give you is a basic outline overview of the project. Or the technology that we plan to use, get into the details of the facility design, and then talk a little bit about how we plan to address odor, the potential for odor, traffic and noise. And then open it up to any questions. So the overview, so the rationale for this project, it's, it's really quite simple, but it does get into the weeds a little bit. So currently, crossroads is permitted to take municipal sludge for disposal, has been for years. But starting back in two thousand and eighteen, in an internal corporate directive, we stopped taking so much, and that was across the company for a variety of reasons, primarily the potential for stability problems or other issues at the landfill. It was not for any compliance reason, and it was a totally internal reason. Concurrently, the main DEP, especially with what's going on with municipal sludge in the state over the past couple of years, their recommended disposal preferred method for disposal is landfill. So at the same time, we voluntarily stopped taking so much sludge. The state has had to, needed more landfill capacity for sludge. So prior to two thousand and eighteen, we used to handle north of three hundred tons a day at peak days. Since two thousand and eighteen, we've averaged less than seventy five tons a day. So you can see where this is going. For us, we've done enough engineering work to know that if we dried the sludge first, we could take more of it. So you can think of this facility as kind of a stop along the way, it's material we can take, but we'd like to take some of the water out of it first before we landfill it. So the proposed facility is to take a process approximately two hundred wet tons a day. Inbound capacity, dry it from seventy five percent water down to less than thirty percent water content. And at that level, it becomes a different kind of product, it's much, I don't know if you've seen municipal sludge, but it looks like mud, if you will. It can be kind of sloppy, and this would dry it to a more crumbly-like material that's easier for our operators to handle and easier for us to landfill. So two hundred tons per day in, fifty tons out of the facility would go to the landfill. And that hundred and fifty tons per day difference, that's water, that's water that we take out of it. We'll be collecting that water, we'll be, we'll have a tank on site, we will treat that water if necessary for possibly for bringing back to the wastewater plants that we got the sludge from. So you can see there's this nice loop involved, it's closed loop. We're planning to use state-of-the-art, energy-efficient drying technology, which I'll show you in a moment. And then all the processing, the sludge storage prior to processing, we'll have a couple of days worth of storage, will be done in enclosed odor-controlled buildings. We'll go over that more in a few slides. The team we put together, obviously, we're the owner, developer, operator of the facility. Woodard and Curran out of Portland is supporting us with engineering and permitting work. A company called Odor Science and Engineering, an expert in the field of odor science and engineering, is providing some engineering support for odor control systems. Soul Company out of Portland did our traffic impact review, Veril, formerly Veril Dana, again permitting support. Sheridan Construction would be our general contractor, and IEC Electrical out of Strong would be our electrical contractor. Typically, we don't show electrical contractors on this kind of project team, but you'll understand why in a moment. And then the technology itself, the dryers will be supplied by a company called Shinsy USA. So the permits we need, obviously, we need a site plan permit from the town, and we are going to need a sanitary wastewater disposal permit for, for the restrooms, for the washrooms. Main DEP, we're going to need two permits, two sets of permits, I should say, chapter four oh nine, which is a solid waste processing facility license. And chapters one forty and one fifteen is updating our air emissions license and a new source review. Primary reason for that air emissions license is going to, is because the landfill itself has a license that kind of covers the whole landfill, a title five permit. So any new activity on the property, we have to look at amending that license. And new source review, also part of that same process, we will also have a small generator for, just for lights and for safety equipment, it would not power the whole facility. So that needs to be covered under those permits as well. So the technology, drying municipal sludge biosolids has been around for many, many years, there's hundreds of of installations, successful ones operating in the US, I think they first became really popular starting back in the eighties and nineties. But many operating successfully, the technology, however, has evolved over that time. And so the technology we're choosing to use here is what is called a low-temperature belt dryer, and I'll show you a diagram of it in a moment, but the basic process is, you know, it's going to heat up the sludge to get the water out, same as other dryers. But this one is relatively new to the US, there are starting to be many installations of this kind of dryer, there's installations now in Wisconsin, Vermont, Arizona. The company itself, though, has installed dryers all over the globe, they've got hundreds of installations doing up to a thousand tons a day, so it's a technology we think is going to eventually take over in the US. It's extremely energy efficient because it uses, guess what, a heat pump to use, it uses a third of the energy of normal dryers that may run on natural gas or biogas. It's also operates at a low temperature, the the dryers, the ones I talked about from the eighties and nineties, those would operate at six, seven hundred degrees Fahrenheit, a direct flame shooting into the dryer. This is slow and low temperature, it, operating temperature is not that much hotter than a clothes dryer. But what happens is the material stays in the dryer longer on this belt, and I'll show, show you a diagram of that in a minute. But because of that, it minimizes any dust or, or related safety concerns. And then a really great feature about this is there's no air stream to treat out of it. The air is recirculated within the dryer through the fan and the heat pump, and I'll show you a diagram of that in a second, but that also makes a huge difference. Those dryers of old, all that air would be blown right through the dryer and had to go to a system to be treated. In this one, the air is recirculating. And then really exciting part of this project is the electricity will come from the landfill. We already have a three point two megawatt waste energy plant, biogas energy plant collects the landfill gas, puts three point two megawatt on the grid, we are going to take approximately fifty to sixty percent of that to dry the sludge, so again, a really great loop here, when that sludge goes in the landfill with the other waste, it degrades, it generates biogas, it goes to the, the energy plant, we convert that gas to electricity, it comes back to dry the sludge. So how this technology works, let me first walk you through how it goes through the dryer, and you'll see a diagram of the dryers in a moment, there's, there's three of these that'll be in a processing building. They're about a hundred feet long, about ten feet wide, about eight to nine feet tall. And the sludge will be come into, in via conveyor from the storage room. It'll, it'll be spread out on the belt, introduced into the dryer, and that belt is, like I said, about ten feet wide. It's perforated, and it'll ride down, travel down the belt along the top, come back, go the other way. So it'll be in there about three hours, and it'll come out in a product that may look like this or the, the picture on the slide previously. But the heat is supplied by the heat pump, and within this enclosure, on, on the hot side of the heat pump, you're taking that hot air and you're blowing it up through the belt, you're taking it off. And that now it's cooler, still warm, saturated with water, it goes to the cool side of the heat pump, the condensing side, and the water drops out. And that'll be captured in piping and go to a tank, we'll show you in a moment. But that air just keeps getting recirculated, it starts out dry, soaks up the moisture from the sludge, comes back to the cold side of the heat pump and drops out like a, like a you know, a glass of lemonade, ice cube on a ninety degree day, it's going to, it's just going to drop out, the moisture's just going to fall out. So the design for, for this permit that we're asking for the town, state permits, we have to do thirty percent design and design report. We did that, collaborated with Woodard and Curran on that. Show you first where we're planning to put the, the project on the property down here, aerial view, here's the Route Two. And here's our entrance into landfill, our private road up diagonally. We are looking to site the project on the site of the former tire processing facility that closed about a little over a year ago. It's an already developed about three acre area. And it was a licensed solid waste processing facility, we'll show you a close-up view of this in a moment, but it's a really great fit because it already was a licensed, main licensed solid waste processing operation on that footprint. Up at the upper corner here is the existing landfill gas to electricity plant. That outline you can just faintly see in yellow is the new phase fourteen landfill that's going to be coming online shortly. And pass scales, the leachate storage and transfer area existing right here. And this is the new entrance to the phase fourteen landfill, goes right by the former tire processing facility. So you can see how this was a great fit on the property, good and buffered as well. I've already mentioned that it was already permitted, this is just a, shows you on the footprint superimposes the new facility on an old aerial of the tire processing facility, so you see, we're not going to be develop any more area. There's no clearing required, there's no more impervious surface, we use the existing stormwater management systems, you see part of it here. It's really well buffered, it's about twenty two hundred feet from the nearest neighbor. There are significant buffers to all the wetlands, there's not near any wetlands of significance or any other sensitive areas, this is how this got permitted before as a tire processing facility. And we'll show you some of the protections we have in place to ensure that all the sludge receiving activities are going to be done undercover with containment. A little closer view, this shows the wetlands that have been mapped, again, none of them are of any significance. Here's our existing road, here's the new driveway to phase fourteen, goes right up to the right here. Trucks will pull in, they'll pull off over here, they will back up to this area here, this is a canopied structure. And they will back up to, will have two high-speed garage doors, they will only open when they're receiving material, the trucks will back up to a curb, the door will open, and they will tip their loads into the building. The floor of the building is, I think, about eight or nine feet lower than the curb, so that first building right here is the sludge storage area, we'll show you a little closer view in a moment. This is the processing building where the dryers are. This is another canopied area where the dried product will come out, and then be transferred right up to the landfill, so you can see the sludge currently goes, well, we'll be going right past here today, and it's just basically going to be making a stop, getting dried before going up to the landfill. That, that blue dot right there, that is the condensate storage tank. That will be pipe connection to the leachate area, which is down over here. And we'll manage all of our leachate, all of our condensate either out of that area, or if it doesn't need to be treated, there's an option to haul it right out of this tank here. Oh, one other thing I'll mention is, the site is laid. Oh, one other thing I'll mention is the site is laid out so a fire truck can get all the way around the building. This is general arrangement, fancy name for a floor plan. Here's that, here's that backup area, the canopied area where trucks will back in, tip into that enclosed odor controlled building. This is essentially one building, but it'll be divided, there'll be a dividing wall between them. These are the three hoppers, there'll be three independent trains to feed the dryers, and as I mentioned before, this, once the sludge goes into the dryer, it goes down inside the dryer, rides a belt back, it'll come back out, dried, a conveyor will pick it up and transfer it out to the canopied area for transfer up to landfill. There's an electrical mechanical room, there's office room, break area, and the odor control systems will be on the roof. I'll mention right here now that the both the the biosolid storage area and the dryer, both those terms are going to be odor controlled. I'll show you a slide on some more testing we did around this, but the 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 most potent odors are going to be from that storage area. Given the way the dryers work, so we have actual data that we size the odor control system around for that area. The drying room, we expect much less odor. We actually took tests at a facility that's using these dryers. And again, the air is recirculated within the dryer, isn't emitted from the dryer. But there will be odor in the room, they can't help but be odor in the room. So we're going to have that be odor controlled as well. So talk a little bit about odor traffic and noise. We're expecting between eight to ten trucks per day, which is less than the peak acceptance levels that we took in two thousand eighteen and prior to two thousand eighteen. So this is traffic the landfill has already seen. The trucks are going to have to follow our already established transporter rules and regulations requirements. The processing facility itself, obviously, you know, we picked a really good buffered site within our complex. But we're not going to rely on that alone. We're going to follow this contain and treat strategy. With everything being enclosed under negative pressure, and by that I mean when a door is open, you will feel air move into the building. That that storage area will have approximately four air changes an hour, constantly twenty four seven.
A quick question.
Yeah.
Or it's well buffered. Is there going to be any change or increase in the amount of sound or like evening light, like pollution that would affect any of like, I know that it's not near many people, but you know, I think it's going all the time, like, is it going to be loud where people can hear it at their homes, or is it going to be bright outside?
Yeah. A great question. I have a slide on noise. So if you hold that for just a second, and the light Water and Current isn't here tonight, but I believe the lighting that was spect is particularly downcast lighting, so it isn't isn't seen off site. But we can get you more details on that if you want. But the lighting was specially spect, so it doesn't cause a problem.
Probably one of the reasons for that is little over a year ago, we had a call in on a particular low ceiling evening, and the B D S folks were using rented exterior lighting, light poles and what have you that you see in construction projects.
In the highways.
And the whole place was lit up like something different was going on.
Yeah.
We got a few phone calls, but we addressed it.
Yeah. So as I mentioned before, we did, we did extensive odor testing, believe it or not, there's a whole science around odor and how to measure it. And we did some testing right at a main wastewater plant in their sludge storage storage area to get actual tests from a main sludge. And at the Wisconsin wastewater plant that has a similar drying facility, so we could get odor testing within the room where the processing equipment is. So we wanted to get the most accurate source data we could for odor modeling. And Water and Current did extensive odor modeling, and that modeling looked at various different scenarios, various different treatment approaches. And it takes into account whether, takes into account the shape of the buildings, distance to neighbors. And just so you know, the chapter four oh nine regulations are is where odor is regulated for us. It's not under the air emissions, it's under chapter four oh nine. Maine has probably the, one of the strictest odor regulations in the country for citing solid waste regulations. You basically can't detect it at a property line of an occupied, where there's an occupied structure more than one hour a year, and you have to model to that. So they're, they've gotten pretty strict on how they how they look at this. But in the end, that combination of really great buffer, we found that we could use what's called ionization with high velocity dispersion, will will easily meet that, those standards with a factor of safety. So we can provide you more information on that if you want, but we're going to have to go through a pretty exhaustive review with main D E P as well. Oh, I I didn't mention, I should have mentioned, we have not filed for the main D E P permits yet. I meant to bring that up earlier. We will likely be filing for those the latter half of August.
You already.
Yes, three weeks ago, yeah, three weeks ago, and we had our introduction meeting with the planning board last week. So traffic, I mentioned the eight to ten trips per day, and then there'll also be four to six tanker trucks a day leaving the site with condensate. And then there'll be another ten trips related to employees and vendor deliveries. So we did that full traffic impact study, not just for our project, we we have to do this for the chapter four oh nine project, chapter four oh nine permit, so we went ahead and did it to present to you folks as well, and we did it for the entire site, so all the traffic that comes in and out of the site. And the key findings from that, we generate about eighteen new one way trips in peak hours. This is less traffic than the tire processing facility had, and that tire processing facility was there for twenty years. So it was significantly less traffic. And looking at the traffic study work down on route two, there was no level of service concerns at route two in the site entrance. Level of service got D O T's highest rating at A, both during peak A M and P M hours. And they also found that route two has the capacity to accommodate the trips generated by the facility, which should be a surprise because we had more trips before from the tire processing facility.
So is there any tire processing?
It's not there, it 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 moved to another location, where they moved. Fairfield a year ago.
You're at the John Deere dealership on one oh four. Look across the interstate where the old Northern Mattress Building was in behind it, excuse me, you can see tire processing and stockpiles of tire chips there. They've been there since I think, late twenty two versus late twenty one.
So your question about noise, so again, secluded, well buffered location. There is going to be noise from the trucks and loading equipment, of course, but it's the same as we have today, characteristic of our existing operations, the landfill, related to the landfill and other activities on site, but that'll be only during working hours. The processing equipment, all the conveyances and the dryers I showed, that's all indoors, an insulated building. Very low noise, there's not much noise, it's conveyor belts moving, that's it. So the 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 highest potential noise emitter would be the odor control, the fans from the odor control equipment. And they will, they will run twenty four seven. And the noise generated from that is expected to be thirty eight decibels, three hundred and sixty feet from the facility. And you ask, why did we pick three hundred and sixty feet? Because the D E P rules require us to determine the odor at the nearest property line. And there happens to be a landlocked parcel just on the other side of the access road there, which is not occupied. So thirty eight decibels at three hundred and sixty feet, the comparison is forty decibels is the sound level in a quiet library. So this is not going to be a noisy operation. And then I think again, it feels like we're picking on the tire processing facility, but it's 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 going to be significantly less noise than was associated with the tire processing facility, which was all outdoors. So that's hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, note there was an increase in sort of like light disruption for, you know, the evenings, or if it was going to be noisy, and it sounds like it's actually less.
So I I I I didn't quite meet my goal, it took twenty two minutes, but I did take a question. So we're open to any questions, we're totally open to any anything you might want to ask her.
Do you expect the G E P like patients to go smoothly?
We'd say, well, first off, we think there's a lot of interest on the part of the state to cite this kind of facility, but we expect them to do their due diligence. So we had a free application meeting with them about five weeks ago. And we had a full room at D E P, including the commissioner showed up, so we think there's a lot of interest in the project. But I have no doubt they're going to work through it pretty methodically to make sure every every box is checked and every everything is looked at.
Sorry if I missed this, but is this the first in the state?
Dryer?
Yeah.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah. There are other dryers in New England, just generally, Boston has has dried all its sludge for over twenty five years. There's one in Lawrence, and there's one in Stanford, Connecticut. There aren't that many in New England. There's many in other parts of the country.
Is this project going to create any long term jobs to the community?
No, not that we foresee.
Wait, wait, yes, it is.
Yes.
Wait, what, long term, what?
Long term jobs. Jobs, oh, I thought you said problems. I think, yeah, I thought you said problems, four to six, four to six jobs.
Full time, full time.
Yeah, full time, yeah. Yeah, yeah, and we think they'll, they should be good paying jobs because of the technical nature of the work.
What's the approximate, do you know what the approximate total holiday investment would be on this project?
It's going to be somewhere around thirty five million plus.
For those that don't know, and these two know it better than any of us, most of the sludge throughout New England has been land spread for many, many years, and it's created a lot of, like we've seen in the news locally here, problems with PFAS and what have you.
Yeah, I would say Maine is still the only state in the country that has banned land application. So that's just not making a judgment on it, but it's the only one that has, there's still some other states that, many states that allow it. Some restricted heavily, but with that decision to ban it, which was the legislative decision, suddenly Maine went from what?
Over fifty percent.
Percent being land applied to zero overnight, which is what created all of a sudden the where is this going to go? Well, well, we have landfill capacity, well.
You have restrictions.
We have restrict, we have our own self imposed restrictions that I don't think many realized. So that's kind of what's created the problem.
And a lot of sludge now goes to Canada.
Yeah.
Because of the Quebec, New Brunswick.
So I was gonna, so when you guys went from the three hundred down to the twenty eighteen, where did all that sludge go that you guys used to take?
Other facilities, other places, but we we dropped off and there is this gives you, this gives you an idea.
Gradual.
It it was kind of gradual that it dropped off, and it was, it wasn't like we, it was a guillotine overnight. Our corporate engineering team and others said, we've got it, we want to cut this back because there've been problems elsewhere in the country, and they just, it was blanket across waste management's entire franchise. So you could see it started tailing off here.
We always were very successful, I think you would say, and Derek as well, landfilling sludge, we did a good job blending, you have to blend it and and mix it and a lot of people don't like, even our operators initially hated managing sludge, mostly because they took the odor home with them. Their families didn't like it either, and I don't blame them, but if properly managed, mixed blend, blended with trash, demo, other solidification agents, you can do a good job at it, and we did, we did a good job at it, but overall, the company said no, and then because of other places, like anything in life, people that weren't doing it right had trouble. And they developed a a not to exceed ten percent of of a select total. And we sat ratcheting back.
And it wasn't, it wasn't just municipal sludge, it was any wet waste.
Yeah.
So they wanted, they wanted to, they wanted to cut back the amount of wet waste.
Grendy spoils became a no no. Some industrial filings drained from people that are turning and what have you, we DM challenge. In many ways, we kicked a lot out and it went to our competitor to the north.
So I have a question, when that water is extracted from the waste, and I'm guessing it gets tested at that point, and say that you do find hazardous things that, like there is, you know, we keep hearing this, what happens to that? Like, where does that go? And how do they?
So I, it's a great question, I glossed over, thanks for pointing that out. So we plan to install PFAS treatment on the landfill for landfill leachate, as well as have that available for the condensate from the dryer. So we're going to treat for PFAS, we'll be one of the first in the in the country to treat landfill leachate for PFAS before we send it back to wastewater plants.
So at that at that formation of what that is, you can treat that because if it's on people's land, but you can't do anything, right? Like, it's just kind of, it's been spread there that never stick your horse on that pasture because it's, you know, they're done, but like at this like where it's the water, you guys can treat it and contain it and eliminate it?
Yeah, water can be treated, yeah.
You don't have a process running before the end of twenty four.
Yeah.
That's great. Yeah, I just, I've always heard of the PFAS like tier breaker, and it's bad, but.
Where's the water?
In some medicine. In some medicine, San Diego is where all of our leachate goes.
They just had something.
They are in the process, we've actually assisted them with studies and and financed a couple of projects there. And they are, they received, I don't know, last I knew, eleven million dollars, they'd like to have fifty for the project that they want to put in, and they'll likely be the first treatment plan in Maine.
Yeah.
To treat the PFAS, and they'll.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other piece too is all sludges that would be accepted at the facility, and as are today, there's there's screening, there's a process that they have to go through for acceptance. So testing for for metals and whatever else may maybe have concern, so there'd be a free screening aspect of it before even arrives on site. Yeah. And that exists today. And that exists today, so we we can't, we we can't take hazardous waste.
Okay. And there's no impact with the addition of this facility to like our warm pregnant that we already have in North Walk, that's not.
Okay.
Yeah. All of our waters contained, shipped outside by tankers to Insumet, usually to Sappy, and then with the things going on at Central Maine, Sappy had a cease and desist with us just because it made sense for their corporate to do that, I guess, understand it, we all said a hundred percent of it to Insumet.
Yeah, and just maybe for everyone's identification, the Insumet takes in a lot of liquid waste from Maine, takes in tremendous amount of septic from Maine, so it's become a a major piece of infrastructure for the state to get septic treated and all kinds of things, but they are moving ahead, as Jeff said, to probably, yeah, significant project to install PFAS treatment of their own.
So that's solid part that you guys put back into the facility. What's the PFAS like there? Because I know that's questions, or I think, or is it all contaminated water?
No, no, great question. Some independent work, as well as our own research, shows that the PFAS stays with the solids. So even 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 studies looking at leachability of it long term, over twenty years, it's staying with the solids.
But it'll go to the secure landfill.
Yeah.
And then the liquid, liquid from. Well, come out, let's hear it treated, and then no.
Yeah, there there's three, there's three great loops here, I like to, we got to come up with a graphic on. Because, you know, the the biosols come from the treatment plant, we send them back, the cleaned up water, or the water that's safe for them to take. Then the biosols we dry goes to the landfill. And obviously, leachate is coming back to be treated, right? And and that biosols degrades, sends biogas to the gas to electricity plant, and we use that electricity to dry. Uh, sends biogas to the gas to electricity plant, and we use that electricity to dry the. The sludge, so it's, it's really a great. Sustainability story. Safe way to manage sludge. Yeah. All right, anything else? Thank you, we look forward to it.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time.
Sorry for not hearing you.
It's okay.
No, you answered it the right way. I have a ringing in my ears, so maybe I screamed it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh.
Thank you.
Anything from the company? Jim, um, moving forward, discussion action on Winslow food recovery contribution. We talked about this at Leva's last meeting and directed to the board was to reach out to them and see what they need. And we don't want to just send them a check, we want to meet one of their needs, so, um, they talked about it as their operating group, and they came up to a few different things. Uh, the first was the trailer dolly, the twenty-five fifty, um, that obviously helps them meet their food trailers from Wala, I think, around. Then the other was the forklift, um, which obviously helps with retaining food. Um, those were what I thought was in the ball, I didn't think we wanted to buy pallet covers or things like that, um, so. Of the things that they submitted, those seem to be the two that. Um, probably were in our budget range for what we would contribute at this time. I think they definitely spent a big effort.
All right, if we decide move forward with supplying them with these two items, do we have any capability using Parpa funds for that or?
So I'm only going to suggest one. At this time, purchase one or another. Um, and we have private contributions, the people who give themselves zero tax dollars, right now the balance on that account is thirteen oh three five. If gentleman contributes monthly, uh, we've had some grants come in. Folks gave during COVID. So we have thirteen thousand in that account right now, that's strictly for community food access.
Buy one and then two months, go along good, I know.
Yeah, so do we need a motion to, we just need to decide which one we want or?
They can give priority of which one, either of, so either one, they have to look at.
Like, uh. The jack. More important. Do they have them, what are they doing right now? And?
I would have, I'm not sure. It could be the manual one instead of the automatic one.
I haven't worked in a warehouse, anything. The, the manual one you could do if the trailer.
Um, I was just.
Moving the trailer around the other, put a truck on it to move it and stuff.
Cool, yes, I think. I've done a list, uh. Some type of like, um, just, you know. The other motion that we purchased the trailer dollar, trailer dolly, um, up to the amount of two thousand five hundred fifty dollars for the Winslow food cover.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion I have? Say none, all is paid, say everybody. Next. All right, discussion acting on donations. Right, so, uh, I was going through, somebody had kind of tickled the. Community revitalization plan we put together a couple of years ago, and so I was going through that the other day, and I'm like, you know, we have a lot of departments that just went up in there, and one of those things was. Uh, a building down to a school park, can base utilities, surveillance, things like that. I said, that seems like a pretty quick and easy one that we could execute, we probably have done before fall's over. So I reached out to a new New York resident. Uh, who is, believe a co-owner, oh, this is a kind of building, what do you think of the ball for price? Uh, he came back to the donor, you know, to get the donation. Wanted to donate the entirety of it, so it would, it's a full dimension, it's ten by twelve. Uh, cabinet cell is unfinished on the inside, and the five windows look pretty much like what you have, the actual exterior is ten by twenty, sixteen by ten is the inside. I thought it would be a little character, uh, and then they would be responsible for putting some sign on it to recognize the donation, but, um. Yeah, I thought it was pretty cool, and. I'm loving it, so Jeremy Turner, he's a gentleman that bought a few of those lots up on the farm road. Doing the ring on, um, building a ten by twenty can, full placement in the ballpark.
I will, they'll be graciously accept that donation.
Second motion, the second, uh, any other discussion, these guys also donated the building at esports with its organization, traveling. They're very, very, they're in higher than I see. Uh, so, uh, since no other discussion, all paid, and that is every. Uh, see, this explanation on use of unassigned current balance to written plans, please. Uh, this is surplus, and you know what? Uh, town meeting voted to authorize you to. Use up four hundred thousand dollars, uh, from surplus, the unassigned fund to reduce taxation. Customarily, the board has approved an up to amount, and then the tax assessors would apply it as they see fit. As long as I've been here, or this board has authorized up to the maximum, the town meeting has authorized, and the tax assessors can in turn use all of it to offset taxation. On your quick one pager, um, you can see that our current balance is approximately two point eight million, you take off one hundred thousand, that leaves you at two point four. Auditing recommendations, they want you to keep three to six months in there of purely expense, no consideration for revenues, if you have to pay your bills for three to six months, what is our position? We would need. Up to two point five million, uh, to pay our bills for six months, so it still leaves us in a pretty healthy range. Um, just shy of that absolute top dollar that they want, so the pleasure of your board, Bruce, just ladies and gentlemen.
I mean. It would say like, you never know when crack can hit the fan, so if they say that we should have a certain amount, like I don't think that we should, even if it's only fifty thousand dollars, dollars less, I think that we should. Be like. You know, where it is something that's like not necessary to do, you know, I, it, that brings it down to like three hundred and fifty thousand instead of the four hundred, so that we make sure that we have that buffer, and. I think that we should certainly take that into account versus just going to the maximum.
That's logic.
Yeah, so.
I don't know.
Um, whatever the recommended amount is to maintain paying all of our bills for permanent amount tax.
Very. What are you going to be?
Fifty-two thousand, we're not.
Fifty-one, two.
Yeah, fifty-one. Eight.
Two forty-eight, about three hundred and forty-eight thousand, sorry, I have three hundred and forty-eight thousand. Yes, so there's a motion, uh, next second, uh, any further discussion, say none, all paid, say everybody. Uh, discussion, uh, discussion action on full permanent application, target of two. Largely a formality, this is a poll replacement, oh, sorry, a new poll, I'm talking about bill requires more motion in a second to approve notification, one oh three oh oh nine eight nine oh one two.
One oh three four nine eight nine zero one two. Second.
I, I think you're going to find that they're adding additional polls to support the expansion program.
Oh, okay. Are they placing polls soon, like someone came by, child's room, like.
So they are checking distances in between polls and added intermediate polls, because since I got this the last week, I did this. So. Yes. You don't have to wait. So if you want to, say, motion second, any further discussion, say none, all paid. Yeah, I do. And this one is for upper mainstream there, uh, let's see, replacing existing, replacing two existing and adding one mid-stay. If I had to guess with this one, this one is, oh, it's on the upper mainstream itself, this side of the street, so just poll replacements.
I moved to approve the poll.
Say, motion second, any further discussion, say none, all paid. That's. Most of us, I'm sure.
He brought us all.
Other business.
Other.
I have a mind, but I'm just, but I will just, we'll save it for.
I can't make our arguments take.
All right.
No.
Thank you, section, discussion, any motions?
Will we go into executive session?
Motion. So, any further discussion, say none, all paid.